Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming to the City of Gilbert Regular Council Meeting and Truth in Taxation meeting. After roll call, we'll open it up to the public to express their concerns on the levy increase. Present is Councillor, or Councillor, interim clerk Mike Skengit, Councillor Potenin, Councillor Heitzman, myself, Mayor Smith, Councillor Polis, Councillor Skengic, City Attorney Brian Lindsay, Chief Teacher, Public Works Director Sam Auger.
One correction, Tom. He's our full-time clerk.
Full-time clerk, correct. I'm so used to saying interim. Full-time clerk, correct. And if everybody would please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll... The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And we will now open up our Truth in Taxation.
Probably do an overview, since no one has any...
True, yes. I'll have Mike explain an overview as to where the city is looking at.
So last year, when the city made their budget, they didn't have their audit done. So they did a preliminary levy, 36% above the previous year. This year, when I came in here midstream, their audit still was not completed. They still don't know where it was. So we did a preliminary budget of 1.35, a 35% increase. After we got closer to the end of the year here, and have been able to look at some different costs, and our audit's still not completed, so we don't know exactly what's going on in our enterprise activities. We looked at the budget and adding up all the numbers and looking at where things came in, we ended up with a 7% levy increase. So if anybody's tonight, and I've had letters from people who think it's going to be a 35% increase, it's not going to be a 35% increase. We ended up at a 7% increase. Last year, you had a 0% increase. You had that for several years. That compounded itself to the point where you need to change the direction of where your revenues are going because expenses are going up whether we like it or not. That's just a reality. So looking things over, we moved some different things around to get where we're at. 7% is pretty reasonable. Last year, when you built your budget, it wasn't accurate. We were over a quarter million dollars off on revenues and actual expenses. So that doesn't disappear. So when you look at our budget increase this year, a lot of that budget increase is recognizing the expenses and the revenues that weren't properly recognized last year. So when you get to the end of the road, we think that we have pretty much fully recognized all of our operational revenues and costs. We're a lot closer than we were last year because I looked at where the mistakes were and corrected those. And at the end of the day, we could easily be in a, to be more financially solvent because you haven't had an increase in a long time. We could be at 15%. But by utilizing some of our reserves from our utility funds to take care of some wages for people who work in that area, and also utilizing the campground to pay for our new fire truck and our new city dump truck, that lease arrangement goes through the year of 2039. That has been incorporated into the budget and is being funded through the campground. So those are all things that are in place and are a reality before I got here and was able to help build this budget. I think this budget is very conservative at 7%. I think it will help us meet our expenses. It's not overly rich on the revenue side. When we get our audits completed, and we have a new audit firm now who's working on the project as we speak, and when that gets done, we'll be able to make better financial decisions about exactly where those accounts are at. That means in the future, we maybe have additional revenues where we can take that and set it aside for capital improvements, or things like a street sweeper, or a truck, or a fire truck, or a police vehicle. This budget also does include a new police vehicle this year. I haven't bought one in a really long time. We're at the point where that hit the need factor, and that's where we're at. So overall, the levy increase, I believe, is like $89,000 on a $3 million budget, which is very minimal, a very austere, as cheap as you can get place to be. And there's no way the city, or any city, can run on 0% increases or 1% increases. It's just not possible. You know what your own costs have gone up for tires, and insurance, and gas, and operating expenses. Wages went up 5% this year. So it's not like we're just picking these numbers out of the air. They're very tightly done. The contracts are in place with the union. I have no control over that. They are what they are. We go into negotiations for 2025, that'll be a whole nother thing to move forward with. But I'm not blaming this on any particular department. Expenses have gone up across the board. Operational, insurance, wages, they're going up everywhere. So when you look at the budget, anybody who thinks it's 35%, it is not 35%. It is a 7% levy increase, which is very minimal. So if anybody has questions, please stand up and let's hear what you have to say.
Hi, I'm Mick Holt. I used to be on the Water Light Board. For almost six years, we were trying to put what we do for block apartments on their apartments. Some of you, and Broadway Manor, and whatever was on Main Street. Hopefully, we've got a council that's going to control. The team drove this home, you know, we asked them not to do the alimony. They still did that, and then no one assessed the people that lived there. But anyway, to get back to what was at the top, you know, it's a shortfall. And I blame the council. There's three of them on here that I blame. We were trying to get that for the apartments, and it was a fight. We finally got it, not even a year ago. And you know what money you lost not doing that? From day one, when Overstar got into the office? I figured over $400,000 that would have went into a bunch of this company, this city. So here's where we're sitting. Now we gotta look at paying a fire truck and a bomb truck, and it's just crazy. And, you know, my taxes are good. Well, it's 7% now, right?
Correct.
So it's not to be as bad. But at first, it over, it cost me, it cost me $450 a month money for living my house. It's crazy. We all get the same benefits. It should be a flat rate. Everybody should be paying a flat rate. But anyway, that's, that's the council's business. But hopefully, the new council can control the big spender. Because we can't afford it. Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Bob, for all your work.
I'm Nick Little Skurbek. I'm on the Water Light Board. I think we got a member coming up. Hopefully, that can be appointed. But what I wanted to bring up is the fact that you're talking 7%. I personally am not comfortable with that. I think that's too high, and we have to operate on this. We are the third highest city in St. Louis County tax plan. That means that everybody in here, you know, you're paying high already. And I know that the cost of living and everything else has pulled up. I would recommend to the council, re-entertain or entertain and hold on at the most 5%. That's a stiff pill to swallow. I would like to point out to the council, remember the last 10 years, the city went from 1,800 to 1,687, operationally. We have empty houses sitting in town. We never used to, just to go back and talk a little bit, and this is the thing. The city, for years and years, never charged a tipping fee that you have to pay for the plumbing regarding. Now it's going to go on the tax roll. That'll be $85 a year more just on that. That should be getting tax statements on, plus whatever your taxes are based on what you contribute to the increase. So I'm recommending to the council, at the most, entertain 5%, no more. You just have to do with less and gear up. Now, the cost of living nationwide has gone up 3% on the increases. So that still gives you a 2% buffer. By 7%, I'm sorry. Do with less. Thank you.
Gary Morgan. Personally, I don't know where the 35% came from. Our, our taxes just for the City of Gilbert went up 70%. And our taxes for the City of Gilbert and St. Louis County went up 42%, which is almost $1,900 for both. So, you know, to go up 70% in the city, it's insane. I don't know how we can fix it, but there's a certain group of people that are getting slammed. If you want to check in the math, you're welcome to check it. Well, we learned one thing. They're going to go 35%. That's not a factor.
And I know what you're talking about. Mine went up 75% last year. But maybe that was from a market increase, market value increase, where mine went up from. And that's probably what yours was from also. And that's the county, the county assessor said our market value is up higher, and it increased my taxes by 75% last year for the city portion.
As a big part of our increases is what's...
The city levy was zero.
With the levies...
I'm just going to set the record straight that we have not agreed or voted on 7% yet. So that's not on the table, as far as I'm concerned.
Paul Skurbek, I'm a business owner in town. And I knew this was going to be a challenge when I put my name on the ballot. And this is going to be a challenge coming into next year. I respect that. Joe, Jeremy, I definitely appreciate your fighting for a lower amount. 7% seems a little bit high. I think we can do better. I think 4.5% to 5% is more in line. Does that mean that we're going to have to find some cuts? Yep, Joe, Bob, next year, we're going to have to find some cuts. We're going to have to give the city a haircut. But that's what the citizens have asked for in this election. I went back four election cycles, and I got more votes than any other person or, or cause on the ballot. And everybody, everybody I talked to said taxes and fees are too high. We've got to do better. We've got to make some cuts. I encourage you to go for 4.5% to 5%.
Here's my taxes.
Thanks, Bob.
79.5% increase in...
Does anybody else want to come up?
There's the reason, 137.
I just have a real simple comment. Why can't we figure this stuff out a little bit tighter so you don't have to send a letter to us that says it could go up 35% and get us all riled up? Why not figure it out a little bit easier, a little closer to what it could be, instead of getting that big number out? I know you have to throw it on the board. But we have some information ahead of time that can help us get a little more realistic number so that we don't have to get all riled up. My phone was burning when those things came on. If you told me 7%, you told me 10%, and I don't know. I probably wouldn't have been too excited about it. Jeez, 35%? That's going to fire up everybody. I don't know what happens before election two. Maybe that's not a good idea either. I'll try to keep it nice and secure where it's going, or posted where it's going to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a reply to you two. I appreciate your comments because normally, your audits are completed, and we're not in a situation, I came into a situation that's a mess. You have budget shortfalls on revenue and expenses. Your audit information is inaccurate. We threw a number out there just to make sure we were covered. We never had any intention of trying to be there. We'd like to be as low as we possibly can. So we're doing the best we can with the limited information that we have. I agree with you. It's not a great way to do it, but they did it the previous year for even more than that. And I thought, well, let's make sure that we cover our bets. And when we get to the end of the trail here, we'll have a lot better numbers. So I hope that you're much happier with 7 than 35. I know that I am, and that was our goal all along. And my expectation would be the next time you set a budget, we should be able to give you a preliminary budget in September that's realistic. But without any information whatsoever, it was a very compromising situation to try to work with.
Anyone else? Please come up. Most of you weren't here. Oh, please.
Hi, I'm Chris McPhee. I've lived out on the border down in Florida. And I appreciate the comments from our clerk. I know you came into a big mess here. And we moved here four years ago, and we've been in a big mess. And just doing a little bit of research, and looking at tax structures throughout the state of Minnesota, we don't compare favorably with Edina, or Grand Rapids, Duluth, just about anybody. Our percentage of our tax rate is significantly higher than all of those. Significantly higher than both counties where we're involved, or the union, common law cities. And I appreciate the work that you've done, Tom, and Val, and Jerry.
Thank you.
And I certainly don't blame you. But in looking at our taxes, what's proposed, as one of the dads you saw me mention, throwing out 35% of the amount, and putting everybody on edge. And there's a lot of questions that we never really found answers to. I realize that we're in a tough business sometimes. I don't see you standing up and taking the possibility apart. I think my taxes are right on the 7%. 7% of that I haven't figured out, but it's probably going to be 75%. A lot of tax money for a single family home in Little Town that bought a whole lot of communities. I know that everybody on our cul-de-sac tower, security is what we hear financially. We haven't seen a budget. We hear a lot of talk, and we don't see a lot of transparency. I don't know when this has been changed, but it's very disheartening. We have to stay out here and recognize our financial situation. And not hearing anybody say, "Surely, what items are we looking at? Reducing, eliminating?" Standing back from all, and it's just, it's not sustainable. You see that, please, 75%? Well, they did mine in Social Security, but not today. Why not keep it up here?
Anyone else? Most of you weren't here for our working session, but we had pretty good discussion. We're going back and forth between 5 and 7%. My two cents worth, this two years of experiencing what the city's gone through with our shortfalls and issues I've seen in the city. Everybody knows I worked here. I patrolled these streets. Our infrastructure is in dire straits. It needs to be taken care of. That the flooding we had this spring, I literally, up on New Jersey or Nevada, I forget which street it was, watched a piece of asphalt flapping in the runoff water. All that needs, and there's other areas in town that need to be worked on. It, and of course, that costs money. Yes, we did apply for FEMA, and we were getting a little bit of a runaround on it from them. So we're not out of the woods yet. We still might get something, but there's a good possibility we're not going to get any funding from that disaster. That's the reality of it. But those roads need to be fixed. And what I've seen with our finances of the city, zero, and I mentioned it last year's budget, we should have had at least a 2% increase or something to try and stay ahead of the game. And I think moving forward for the city, that should be a standard. Because we're falling behind the eight ball. And yes, 7% is high, but we, as a city, from, in talking with Mike, seeing the finances, we don't have any money to apply for grants because the grant process, you have to match that. We have no money to match it. So our infrastructure is going to sit there. It's not going to get worked on. Yes, you can apply for the grants, and you can apply for another grant to cover that matching cost if you get it. What I've seen in our, these two years we've applied, we didn't get. Now it sits. So you have a decision to make. Either spend the revenues or the money that we have reserved, or let it sit. That's where I see the city struggling right now, is we don't have that money in reserves for projects like that. That's why, yes, the 35%, 34% was a safe net for the city because we didn't have our audit, we didn't have our budget, any information to make for this council to make a decision on. But we need to, the city needs to do better. Yes, with the monies that we have coming in, we need to do better. But there are shortfalls, the infrastructure, and we started this year with SEH, our city engineer, working on a capital gains improvement plan for a five- and 10-year contingency plan. It's going to take money to put on reserves for that, those projects. And hopefully, five years from now, there's enough in there that the roads can be fixed. Do they need now? Maintenance now? Yes. All Public Works has been doing is putting Band-Aids on it. And that's not going to fix it. So unfortunately, we're a residential tax base. I feel the pain of the residents having to pay increases in taxes. I do. I totally understand it. We try to get businesses in town. We've talked to gas stations, but nobody wants to come here. So that burden falls on the taxpayer, unfortunately. We've got the campground, that's a source of revenue. It's not enough. It helps. It helps a lot, but that's why we're looking at that proposed 7%. We have council members, I think, and obviously, the public that thinks 5%. But those are my concerns that I've seen the two years I've been in that office. And most of you know I've been down there a lot, trying to figure things out. And the city needs to do better financially, and we need to do better for the residents in maintaining the city. But we can't do that without financial means. So, and I know it's a burden. I, 7% is high, 5% is high. I wish we could do zero straight across the board, but then nothing would get done. And I've seen for this 25 years, I think I've lived in town, a lot of stuff not get done. And it's because there's no monies. So, but the last two years, we hadn't done any projects. Hopefully, saving those reserves back up. I got $1 million for the community center to be upgraded. We begged for that, and the state gave it. We don't have to match that. So that's $1 million. Once we get things going, we can get, hopefully, a new heating system in there. We're going to do the ADA bathrooms, and there's a few other things, hopefully, we can stretch that $1 million into. But that was originally a matching grant. So when I went and we asked the state for it, we had to match that money. We didn't have $1 million for it. We could have applied for other grants to hopefully get some to match it, but the city didn't have the money. So we have to, the city has to do better. We have to build our reserves back so we can do these projects and give the community what they deserve.
Tom, I'd just like to highlight a little bit on that. Well, I'm not originally from there. But if you don't assess the work that's being done on people's streets, people's sewers, that just takes out of the fun. And it takes out of everybody else's pocket that it doesn't matter. So if you don't assess, you don't get grants. I mean, that water tower, that new power substation, everything. A substation would have been paid for with the RRB if they would have just asked. They could, they give up $250,000 on the canyon. But a little story, and I hate going into this, but you know, when I was assessed for my sewer down there, we didn't get any help from the city. And they had charged me, everybody down on differently point, they almost charged me with almost $1,000 more than what the project cost. Because the good old boys, a lot of a bunch of people that sparred on in that area, not hook up with the sewer. Are they all hooked up now, Tom?
We're working on it. There's, there's a few left.
20 years later, still working. But it cost, every guy, every person down on differently point road would cost them $1,000, almost $1,000 more. So that's what I mean. Assess the people that they're supposed to be assessing. Assess the people that they're supposed to be assessed. You know, and the city wouldn't be in a position to say, "No, thanks, Mike, too, for doing the budget and the thing." But, I mean, that's the biggest problem in this town, is that little boy stuff, and Carl's one of them. Like I said, six years, we're trying to get those apartments on, just like every other, everybody else pays. Finally, you get it, but it's only a third derivative. It would have been painful, a long time, three years ago, it would have been painful.
Yep.
I mean, it's just crazy.
Yeah.
But change your opinion.
Thank you.
We have to tell them what we're going to set it at.
If I may, I'd just like to update something that so that the public knows, there's a bunch of people here probably are not aware of it. In the 1970s, the population of Mildred was 2,700. Then 10 years ago, it was 1,800. Now it's, I believe, 1,687. So, that means that less people are paying for whatever's left to pay. And as a matter of record, I would like the people to know, I've been on the waterway for many, many years, and I enjoy it, it serves the community. But here's the thing. People think, "Well, we only got a small business." That's not true. We have 742 residential customers, and we have 50 commercial customers, and nine that technically are municipality. So, if you keep that in mind, what you're looking at, assessment for a mill rate, maybe it's not a lot, 2%. To me, it is because there's less people paying more the taxes. We are, like I said before, we are the third highest city in St. Louis County tax-wise. I don't know how far we are in the state. It's not looking good, so you have to, we have to bite the bullet and do with less. That's always true, but no other way, because as city as a community is shrinking, it's not growing. Thank you.
Thank you, Liam. Please come up and let us hear your thoughts. Now, we have to.
I think we have to vote on it.
Vote on it.
And what we're going to set it at.
We have to discuss and vote on.
I think we close the truth and taxation meeting, and then the, having received all the input from the public, that the public wishes to give, then during, in the regular session, you would pass a resolution setting the final levy and budget.
Okay.
And that motion will be my simple endorsement.
Simple.
Yeah.
Three votes.
Yep. So, then we will have a motion to close our tax.
So, we're not really allowed right now to have more discussion between the council on this? So, we got two guys sitting there wanting, grudgingly acquiescing to a 5%.
Yep.
And three, apparently.
No, we're at five.
We were at six.
There was never a happy goal. We're at medium reach.
Maybe five is where we should come.
Can we compromise on the six, then? Is that where we're at?
Or, I'm willing to go with a five now. I just, you know.
Here's something else. We just, we just put our trust in a guy to tell us how to run our city, and the first thing he comes and says, "Well, best thing for us is to go a 7%." And the very first thing we tell him is, "No, you're wrong." We just, we just entrusted him to make these, help make these decisions for the community. And you hear what I'm saying?
I know, I know, and I was.
So far, he's asked for one thing.
I was four.
And we said, "No."
And I was originally for this.
I'm not saying anything against clerk.
He will be running at a deficit.
In the six years I've been up here, this is the third clerk. We've had that same thing two other times from two different people, and two separate times, the numbers were very incorrect.
Well, and you're not wrong, but continuing to run at a deficit spending doesn't work because the path that we continually dip into need to stay there.
We have had to set budgets for fictitious numbers, just grabbing out of the air because our audits haven't been done for the last, what, two years, I believe? At least, at least two years. We don't know, we didn't know a lot of what, anything.
And we've still set it at zero.
Last year. So, last year, last year, we thought we were doing okay. I mean, we all sat here, we had the whole thing in front of us, and that's why all the.
I can tell you, the numbers were accurate. I can tell you this, that because we lacked.
And this is the course adjustment to that mistake.
And because you lacked financial information, we tried to find it from other sources. I ran an expense to budget report at the end of November, which gave me a pretty clear picture where some of these things were. I knew what your shortfalls were, but I also knew what your expenses going forward were. So, I was very careful in moving those down the line. I even incorporated deductions in workers' comp and insurance with the League of Minnesota Cities that we expect to see in the coming years, so I cut back on those areas. So, I think the numbers are pretty accurate. I can't say with absolute certainty, I know what all your fund balances and things are because they, you haven't had audits and they're not totally reconciled, but I'm pretty comfortable with where I'm at. I spent a lot of time, I went through each department probably half a dozen times to make sure that the numbers were really close. So, I think we're really close. I thought the 7% represented a situation where you would be fully funded and not running at a deficit like you've been doing the last couple of years. So, it's the best I can do with the information available to me, but I think I'm pretty confident in it. I don't think you're going to look back six months from now and say, "He was off his rocker. He wasn't even close." I think I'm very close.
My, one of my problems with some of the past, which includes last year and probably two years or three years ago, was we had the same conversation, basically, with those clerks. And, you know, clerical error of, of what?
Quarter million.
$200,000?
Yeah.
I mean, we, you can't.
And you approved that budget.
I can't accurately set a budget when there's incorrect numbers being presented to me.
Well, I'm with you.
I agree.
And that's, and that's why I have been as careful as I can.
Very frustrating.
I think I'm really close.
And I live in town also, so I'm paying the bill also, but it's very frustrating to be up here and think you're doing what you should be doing, and then the end of the year comes and somebody says, "Wow, you were a quarter million off." It, something got doubled up somewhere along the line. It just takes everything out of any good you think you've done for your community.
Well, I sure hope you never find that kind of an error in the numbers that I produce because I went over them very careful multiple times. I think you're really close, and I think you're fully funded at 7%. So, you know, will you be fully funded at 6%? You'll be getting really close to not being fully funded. So, that's what we came up with the number. You know, I think in the long term, a higher number would be better for the community, but it's harder on the taxpayers. So, it's all small towns without a lot of commercial businesses in them are struggling with this same situation. It's government in Minnesota. LGA hasn't kept up, lots of things haven't kept up, but I think that our numbers are real close, Jeremy. You know, I wouldn't bet the ranch, but I might bet the farm.
Nothing against what you've done, Mike, but we brought the public in here to get their input, and they're telling us to try to set it at five. I'm at five, he's at five. We just need one more person. That's where we sit.
How do we compromise, I mean, between this, you had seven, and you got it at five? I thought you might come to a compromise, but that's up to the council to decide whatever you want to do.
A year ago, we had the wrong information, and we made a poor choice by doing a zero. That problem doesn't go away by ignoring it. It doesn't. It's a course correction that's needed to be made so that we don't continue to spiral downward. People want things fixed. The same people that don't want to have their taxes raised, me, also want to see the streets getting fixed and being able to invest in our water supply and our water treatment plant that's on the cusp of failure at any given moment, it seems like, needs a massive infusion of funding that has to come from somewhere. So, that money just doesn't materialize out of nowhere. So, you have to be prepared to deal with those problems. And underfunding the budget doesn't put us in a good position to deal with those problems as they arise. A failing fire engine, a failing plow truck. People still want their roads plowed. They don't care if they're driving a 1977 International Plow Truck and putting fluid into it like a madman and operate unsafely. They want their roads plowed. That's our responsibility to provide the equipment so that those roads do get plowed. This is the way we have to do that.
I remember the, one of the first meetings that I came to, the auditor told the city that we should have a minimum of, I think it was $400,000 in our reserves. Last year, I was scared because we weren't even close to that, weren't close to it at all. And I'm not going to repeat the numbers that I saw because it was scary. But this year, we seem to be doing better, and that's mainly because we did our rate increases. We did the rate increases to offset that levy. But now that levy, after we find out with the mistakes that were made on last year's budget, sort of bit us in the butt, and now we have to make up for that. And I know 7% is a lot, 5% is a lot, zero sounds much better, and that was really nice to announce that last year, but the reality of it is, and Mike showed me the numbers, we, we got to sustain, and that's why I say the city can do better. Council is going to have to do better next year, but we can't shortfall them for what work that needs to be done. That I've been with Sammy, I've been with SEH, we've seen all the infrastructure that needs to be done, and we can't keep putting it off. And if we start now, next year, I would hope that the levy would still be set between 3% and 4%. Hopefully, it doesn't have to go to 7 for any shortfalls, but that helps the city for that infrastructure, for the cost that the Public Works and the employees down at the wastewater treatment plant have the means to fix what's broken down there, unfortunately. We're building the new water plant. We, I don't know, hopefully, SEH does a really fantastic job, and we don't have the issues we had with the wastewater treatment plant. I've been to most of the meetings with SEH in the process, and they're spot on. They sound very well put together. It sounds like we're going to get a good plant. So, hopefully, we don't have, but it's the unknown, and the city can't function on $400,000. And if we tap back into that, we're down to $300,000. If we have any disaster hit, you know, we can beg the state and county for help. It's up to them whether they want to give it to us.
And the recent flood is a great example of that, that we're, you know, we have things that were damaged beyond usability that have to be repaired with potentially no help from FEMA.
Yep. And that's very frustrating.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Karen Kate. And I just have a question. I'm hearing a lot about expenditures we have to make, understand that. I'm also hearing about revenue we need to have. I'm not hearing any discussion about cuts we could potentially make. So, I'm just wondering if the council could address that.
The cuts we have discussed, we discussed it in depth last year with Water and Life Board with our garbage. Last year, we were in the hole. I believe the year before, we were in the red, in the hole with the garbage. So, that was something we were looking at. Was it a huge savings? No, but it's something. And I think the oncoming council should look into, once we get the audit numbers, to verify where that sits. That's something we have discussed to cut. What else? I, the employee staffing, I think we've got a good crew. They get things done, but honestly, we haven't really discussed cutting. Mike did trim what he could and adjusted things on the budget, but we're stretched. We're strapped with what we have. Can the council maybe not rehire employees, but the wastewater treatment plant, that took two extra employees that we're still paying for and may have to. However, the last I heard, the plant's running good. Maybe that's a consideration the new council can take on and replace one of them employees. We do have a retirement coming up from Public Works, so that's something the new council's going to have to take a look at, to be quite honest. So, then, I've sat last year's budget, and we, with Councilor Potting and Clerk Zoller, we sat, and we tried crunching everything we could, and it's pretty much a continuation of that budget, hopefully, without the mistakes, Mike. But, yeah, we did, we did try to trim as much as we can.
And this isn't a popular subject, and I'm going to bring it up. You know, you talk about cuts. Have we ever looked into cuts? You know, we're, we're supplying Bywabik with the police force. We're over there. It may become a time in the future where we not, may not be able to afford to be over there. We may have to merge with Evelyn. So, that's something I think this new council should look at. We touch borders with them. To me, it'd be more cost-effective to be with Evelyn than to be by Wabik with eight miles in between. That's just my view. This isn't a popular subject to talk about, and nobody wants to talk about it, but I just put it out there now. So, that is a potential savings. If it's looked into and the numbers work out, then we're better off with Evelyn than by Wabik. That's just something to look into. It's my two cents.
My personal feeling, being in law enforcement for 30 years, I think in the future, that is something that's going to be looked at because smaller communities, your police budget's the biggest part of your budget, but they're also the backbone of the city. They're the ones that keep you safe. They're the ones answering every call that's out there from any psych person or disgruntled person, whatever. They're the ones that are dealing with it. So, in my opinion, and I'm a little biased, the police department is the backbone of the city because they're the ones that keep you safe. You got Public Works that keeps all the streets open and maintains, and are they working shortfall because of their equipment issues? Yes. There's some of that going on, and that's part of that capital improvement plan that I hope continues so money can be set aside to move forward where the city's residents aren't being bombarded with $1.9 million debts. You already have something set aside for it. But it's, yeah. There's things that can be improved.
Just throwing this out there since we're talking about cuts.
Just throwing this out there since we're talking about cuts. And I ran on this. Our commercial garbage service, along with our residential garbage service, has got to be privatized. Right there, we know year after year, we operate $40,000 to $50,000 deficit. If we're talking at a 7% increase that the total's right around $90,000, you've literally eaten away a half of that cost with one decision. Not to mention that in Public Works, that individual that drives around that truck, we can reallocate 10 hours of time back into other projects that aren't getting done because we don't have the manpower for it. Plus, there is a potential of selling that truck. I know it's really old, but hey, if we can sell it for scrap metal, there's revenue there. That's one issue. There is fat in this budget. We just have to be courageous enough to cut it.
Just to address your comments, Paul, there's little doubt that the council has been looking at that as a problem in the garbage service. And I think they were hoping the 2023 audit would be done so they could see those numbers and then see them again in 2024 because there has been a shortfall there. And it is something that is open. Everybody's been discussing it. So because that can got kicked down the road for a while, you'll be in a position to help make those types of decisions. But we will need accurate financial information to do that with. We expect that, to be able to make that decision first quarter, I would say. It seems like a reasonable expectation. So I'm glad you're looking at it, but this existing council has discussed it at length many times. We're just kind of waiting to see. There were some rate changes made last year. We're waiting for audit. We're trying to make, see exactly where it comes out to make an educated decision. So thank you for your comments.
Just trying to see where we're at here. Bob, are you willing to go to a 5%? This is going to go on all night.
Yeah, well, yeah.
You heard the public what they want.
Right. I, and I, you know, I've been to these meetings several times, and I always usually agree with the public. I do, but I don't because I know the numbers. But just to get through the night, I'll go for 5%.
Why don't you guys compromise at 6%?
I'm going 5. I'm not moving. That's what they want. That's what I'm going with.
Yeah, we're here for the people.
You elected us to represent the city, so that's what I'm doing.
The problem is, you go 5%, and next year, you're going to have to move 3%, 4%, 5% yet.
What do you want, 7?
Or you're going to have your budget figured out by then.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, if they get the audit done.
If they get the audit done, they can crunch closer and more accurately. That's been the most frustrating for this council. This is the second year now doing our budget that we didn't have accurate information to make that plan. It's very frustrating. So hopefully, next year, new council's going to have those numbers to really look in depth at those potential cuts. If they, if it's needed, necessary, I don't know.
Last year, I watched Virginia's Truth in Taxation meeting. I think, Brian, maybe you can confirm this. Didn't it go like three hours? Because they couldn't decide on 1%, one way or another, or 2%, whatever it was. They kept bringing it up, and it kept getting voted down and blah, blah, blah.
Well, if we're listening to the public, they're saying 5, at least no more than 5. So that's what I.
I know. That's, and when I was talking 7, agreeing with 7, I didn't hear the public's comments yet. But, you know, of course, you can make any number work, you know, but you may have to deal with it in the following year. But, and that's even may have to. Once we get our concrete numbers that we believe, maybe things will look a lot better than they do now. We don't know. We're hoping that's the case, and that's why I'll go to 5% with my fingers crossed for next year.
And these projects, this capital improvement that I talk about, ain't going to happen next year. It's a time process. It's going to take time to hopefully, we can set that money aside with what revenues we make from the campground, which is very little because the fire truck takes it. But, and our electric fund, yes.
We're possibly going to have a retiree coming up, right?
Yep.
So if you don't hire somebody for two to three months, there's your 2%.
Yeah. No, not even close.
Well, just one last thing, and I'll grudgingly slide down to 5% because I don't think it's in the best interest of the city long term. We didn't get into this position that we're in by investing in the future. We got into this position by letting things lapse, by not repairing things, by letting things slide. And you can't continue to let things slide in perpetuity and have no day of revelation, if you will. It has to be paid for at some point. And if you continue to kick it down the road now, then you're looking back at that 7% and thinking that would have been a good idea rather than the 8% or the 12% because you didn't fix things.
So not starting the year off $200,000 in an error would be extremely helpful.
Yes.
Well, and you're right, but that hasn't disappeared yet.
No.
I mean, that's not.
But we don't have the numbers.
You're right. We don't have the numbers. So all you're doing is sliding that.
It's not disappearing.
Yeah, it's like a slide rule. You're just pushing it down into 2025 or 2026 or 2027.
And you spent the month.
I get that, but.
I don't think you are.
We set that at 5, and we make cuts where they got to be made. That's, I don't know. That's where I'm at.
Had we seen that error last year, had that been brought up, there would have definitely been, had to have been a levy last year. There's no way we could have gone with 0.
Agreed.
Yeah.
But we didn't. It wasn't the case.
That's the problem when your auditors don't do the audit for you, you know? And now it's two years in a row. You know, I don't blame it totally on them, but I guess I do. Because how do you know the numbers unless the auditor gives them to you? You know? And that's, I have never heard of this before, where auditors don't finish a damn audit. It's ridiculous, two years in a row.
I make a motion that we close this Truth in Taxation and take a vote.
Yeah, I think we should take a vote so the people know when they want to leave before the meeting, they can leave.
We have to close it first.
Yeah. You want to make your, you want to pass your resolution and set your budget in the regular session.
Yeah. We have to close it.
Okay, so they won't know if it's going to be 5% or 7% until we vote later, so they have to stay here to hear.
No, we can vote on it next.
We have to do this before closing the.
Yeah, because then we'll.
Before closing the meeting, that's what I'm saying.
Before closing the.
That's why, let's do it now. So then we close the meeting, right, Brian? We can do it that way?
We have to close it, go to the normal meeting, and then do it.
On the agenda, first thing on the agenda then?
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
So the motion was to close this meeting? I'll second that.
Motion by Councillor Polis, supported by Councillor Heitzman, to close our public meeting. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries 5-0. It's odd to say we have everybody here.
I guess we can do that during the agenda discussion, right?
Yep.
Because we haven't decided now, so we can do it then.
Can I make a motion to read adjourn the normal city council meeting? Do we have to do that?
I don't think.
We never started.
Started, so.
Now we got to start it.
Fair enough.
Are you going to move the final budget discussion?
We're already in the meeting, okay.
Things were made in no business. You want to move that up?
I think we shouldn't stop the public here.
Deal with it before all your other items?
Yeah, then the people will know what to.
Yeah, we can.
So that would be addition to the agenda or?
No, it's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda. We'll just skip down to it, but do it after our consent agenda or?
No, that's up to you.
Just so we don't forget.
Well, consent agenda.
We won't forget.
That is true. All right, then, we're going to skip to number 7 and hold business and vote on the We've had a lot of discussion between 7% and 5%. It doesn't sound like there's going to be any bartering on 6%.
Well, I'll make a motion to put 6% on the table, and hopefully, I would get support because this is a can that's going to get kicked down the road for years and years and years, and I'll just put 6% on there.
So what does the 1% difference mean, Mike, in dollar-wise? What is the 1%?
It's about $12,000.
$12,000?
$12,700 something.
Yeah, yeah.
12.7?
Our levy is like 1.2 million, so it'd be, yeah, $12,000. Right. So $12,000, I don't know. $12,000, and when you're talking 3,400 is kind of minor, you know?
Last year, we had 10 grand, and we said, yeah, 0.
Well, you know, but I know we need the money, so I'll second the motion on 6%.
Motion by Councillor Heitzman, supported by Councillor Potvin for a 6% levy. Any further discussion? I, I'm torn, but I still think it's in the city's best interest to have 7%.
You know, 2x6, 2x5, you're the bull breaker.
I know.
I only see one way of going if you think it should be 7, but you're only going to get 6.
Yep.
I hate to say that, but it's cost me money.
Yeah, I know. And any further discussion?
Still think we should go 5. That's what the public said, 5.
I know, and I appreciate their input. I truly do because that's what we represent. But I've seen the numbers, and I trust Mike's numbers to be more accurate than what we did last year. And if he says that's going to put us right at minimum, the city's not going to be able to do anything. And I don't want to set the next council up to fail and have to start worrying about cutting everything just to make up for that. But I, I think I'm going to have to agree with 6. So motion was made. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Nay. Motion carries 3 to 2. Should I do a roll call? I'll do a roll call, vote. Councillor Potvin?
Yes.
Councillor Heitzman?
Yes.
Mayor Smith, yes. Councillor Polis?
No way.
Councillor Skinsich?
No.
Thank you. The levy's going to be set at 6%. All right, we'll move on to the regular agenda.
Should I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion on the table to approve the consent agenda.
No second.
Second by Councillor Potvin. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries 5 to 0. Does anybody, is there anybody in the public for public input? Is there any public input?
Paul had asked me to, he and Dylan Horn asked if they could get approval to go to the newly elected officials' training in St. Paul. I think it's a very good idea for them both to do. Most city councils require their counselors to do that, but it's $350. They would both like to attend. I think it's a good idea. I'm hoping for a motion to support their request.
I would make that motion. Do we need to add that to the agenda, or is that public input?
It's under, I'm going to.
I'll make the motion to send the newly elected counselors to the, to the training.
Paul, second. Thank you.
Motion by Councillor Heitzman, supported by Councillor Skinsich to approve sending Dylan Horn and Paul Skirbick to these training from the state or, is that the state or leaving Minnesota cities for council presence?
I just had a question. Is that lodging going to be included in that?
No. Lodging's not included. Are you, or you're taking care of lodging yourself?
Okay. To make it for three.
Thanks.
Right?
Oh, yeah.
What's that?
They're going to have to do an election on one.
Right. When is the training, Paul?
It's February.
It's not till next year. Yeah. Right, but I was going to amend my motion to make it for three rather than for two. And if.
I almost think, can we move to discussion here?
Yeah.
Further discussion?
The training, so there is for officials that have less than two years of public service training. That's more than Dylan and I signed up for. There is another training course for people who have more than two years. It's like an advanced level or something like that. There are different dates except for that, similar pricing.
And I do believe they do something online, don't they?
There is an online version, yes. We opted for the informal one because we talked with Paul, we talked with Councillor Heitzman and Councillor Skinsich that they got some value out of it.
I'd like to amend my motion to not be as specific as sending the two newly elected city counselors, but to amend the motion to make it so that any of the five positions at this table, the four council members and/or the mayor, could attend this training at their discretion or desire because there's going to be, you know, a third. Man, potentially Bob and potentially Mayor Overstar might want to attend the old folks' version.
Clarification, the training covers a broad range of topics, things like meeting law, social media in daily life, community engagements.
Setting a budget.
Budgeting.
Taxation things. So I would expand my motion to include all five of the current council or not.
Current or oncoming.
Current or incoming council, however they got here.
Here's my comment. I think for now, we can just have the two, and then later on, if somebody decides in January, they sure have time to sign up, and then the new council can approve that. That's just all.
And you're not wrong, but it's just this way, if it's, they find out about it on a Thursday, and they have to wait for a council meeting to get approved, da-da-da-da, this is just carte blanche, it's done. There's only five of us.
What are we in here?
I don't know.
Is this discussion, or are we making?
Yeah, it's discussion.
Okay. Because I made the motion for Paul.
Okay, I second that, mainly to get this into discussion here. But I almost think, I don't care if we want to do it that way, but I almost think it might be more beneficial. I, I don't care if we wanna do it that way, but I almost think it might be more beneficial to just wait for the actual things to come in for the clerk.
That's what I said, yeah.
Which I think is, it's right after, I think, the first of the year. They'll, they'll be in office, and anybody who wants to go can decide at that time.
Right, that's what I said, yeah.
And they reserve hotels. Is it in Mankato again?
Uh, the one that we chose is in Plymouth. I think there is, there's two other cities where it's located.
Okay.
Yeah, they have a few.
Then the advanced, I don't even know what cities those are.
But that's just my take on it, I, after going to it, it, I don't know if it makes any sense to do it now. Might just be easier, once he gets the applications, whoever wants to go, just go.
Yeah, so the next council can vote on it, yeah.
Okay, so you have seconded his new proposal of all council, 'cause he amended his first.
He did support it.
He, he, I'm gonna actually... I'm gonna pull my support, because I just think that they should have it when they're up here. They can do it when the forms come in for it.
The forms are in for them.
Oh, is it already?
Registered.
When's the last date of register?
I don't know. I just know that they both wanted to do it, and it makes really good sense, and that I told them I would put it on this council meeting to get it approved.
Does it make more sense to have them sworn in and be in the position?
It doesn't happen till after the first of the year.
Right.
Registration.
So they will be sworn?
But I'm thinking for any of this.
Yeah.
Does that matter? Not really?
I don't really...
I'll keep my second thought. The only, the only difference is that it doesn't look like they're voting themselves a weekend vacation in Plymouth. This way, we voted for it for them.
Yeah, it's not really that, but, you know, there's no difference. I mean, either they vote on or we do.
Are you all in?
I have the motion.
I'll, I'll support it, if that's what you're doing.
Motion by Councillor Heitzman, supported by Councillor Skinsich, to approve...
Whatever you wanna do.
Current and incoming elected council members to attend the state training for council and mayorship, because you mentioned Carl.
Yeah, and I believe there's other dates too, that you can do in the summer or whatever.
Yeah.
So, it's kind of a blanket thing, you know?
And they'll probably discuss it anyways, but the motion was made, supported, any further discussion?
Aye. Oh, sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries, five to zero.
Jeez, that's tough.
Yes.
It's worth some taxes.
Alright, any other public input, please? Okay, we'll move on. Reports from mayor and council, um, I really...
Skip these, bro.
No. Did we?
The planning and zoning commission, reading boards.
Yeah, that's the consent.
Oh, okay, alright, alright, I'm on it.
Yep, so... The reports from mayor and council, unfortunately, at this time, I don't have anything to say other than, uh, calendar parking is in effect, and with the snow we had, please park on the right side of the roads. It makes public works and law enforcement job a lot easier. Thank you. Councillor Potvin?
I just have a question for city attorney. Are we supposed to certify the election results this, before the year's over? They canvass them?
We should have a vote to canvass the election.
Right, yeah, that's what I thought. So we, can we add that to the agenda? We're gonna have a last meeting, right?
I hope that...
Well, we're gonna have to then, if we have to do that.
Close out all financials, very last possible day, so we can start with a clean slate next year.
So then we can do it then. But I believe it's law that you have to do it, Brian? Is it? Yeah, it's law, so, we have to do it at some point here. So we'll do that.
So we'll...
So that brings up the next meeting, then. As long as we're discussing.
Yeah, when we get, when we get to it.
Okay, we won't jump in. That's all I have, then.
That just confuses me more. Thank you. Councillor Heitzman?
Uh, yeah, I do have something for a change. On the cusp of handing this city ordinance book in, somebody pointed out to me something that they wanted me to address. They have apparently more time than I do to read the, all of the city ordinances. Well, here it is. Section 152.049, sign regulations. Number seven, political signs may be permitted for a period of not more than thirty days before and ten days after an election. Now, it's, it's no secret, there are a lot of signs around town that have been up since at least 2020, and in certain cases, as long ago as 2016. It's time to take your signs down, people. Uh, you know, in, even years when there's a state and federal election, the state ordinances supersede city ordinances, I've learned, uh, and state, no, excuse me, federal, no, state ordinance dictates thirty days after the election, which November 5 to December 11th, 10th, we're at now, it's time. Uh, so, political signs need to come down. It's a violation of ordinance to keep them up. For the love of God, take them down already. That's what I got. Oh, and donate blood, if you can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councillor Pulis?
Uh, yeah, I guess I'll bring this up now, everyone's gonna find out eventually, but I have decided to resign from my position on council due to family stuff, and my work is being very busy right now. I don't have the time to dedicate to this anymore, and I don't think it's fair for me to sit on this seat when someone else can fill my spot. I do wanna thank everyone for putting me in this spot and trying to represent the city the best I can, and hopefully I did that. Obviously, you can't make everyone else happy, but Ty, thanks for everything you've done, Brian, Sam, everybody. I appreciate it, but it's a hard decision, and I just gotta make it.
Thank you, Councillor Pulis, for your service. Councillor Skinsich?
I, I don't have anything right now. I'm good.
Thank you. And we'll move on to reports from staff.
They have a request from Chief Kwiatkowski.
Kwiatkowski.
And they elected new officers to the fire department at their last meeting. We would like to approve the list that they have provided me here.
Will you read the list?
The list, for chief, it's Mark Kwiatkowski. For deputy chief, it's Anthony Nemnec. For battalion chief, it's Todd Devich. For captain, Michael Verdatch. Captain, Jamie Lotiger. Lieutenant, Rusty Rask. Lieutenant, Tristan McCalla. Trustees, Robert Zire, Blake Bergquist, and Erica Bergquist. These are the ones that they had picked after their election, and they would like the council to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve that list of officers from the fire department.
Support? Moved by Councillor Heitzman, supported by Councillor Pulis, to approve the list of officers for the fire department. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries, five to zero. City attorney, Brian Lindsey?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. No formal report, but I am happy to field any questions at the council meeting.
Thank you. Chief Teacher?
Good evening, Mayor, council. I guess the only thing happened this evening is with the snow falling, we've got a lot of rookie minduct plow drivers in our alleys with their little ATV plows. They're unable to move those plows very well. We're asking that people with ATVs do not plow, if they cannot move the snow, and it just leaves the middle roads open to freeze. Problem for Sam. The other thing, we had over eight calls in the last couple of days, in regards to citizens blowing snow into other people's yards and shoveling into other people's yards. Unfortunately, under Minnesota state statute, throwing snow in somebody else's yard is considered littering. The attitude of taking a snow blower and pointing it straight up and letting the, the wind carry the litter into other people's yards is no different than throwing paper up in the air and letting Mother Nature carry into other people's yards.
I didn't hear about that.
So we have a lot of calls. They're turning into new fights over some snow. So, we just ask that people blow the snow in one yard and try to deal with it. People just feel they're considering, but we are having some snow, basically some adult snowball fights with the neighbors right now, uh, because of our first snow. So it's causing some issues, it's causing some hurt feelings. Um, we, we have written tickets, unfortunately, I didn't think we had the word a couple of years ago for littering of snow. Uh, we don't, he doesn't wanna prosecute, we don't wanna write us, we just ask that people, just people consider that. It, it's funny for a little bit, but, you know, when you start taking a couple of showers of snow, and it turns into two snowblowers blowing back to each other, it is also just really common, so. We just ask that people just be cognizant of their neighbors, and then also our city policy drivers, because this stuff froze now, and these ATVs couldn't push it, and they just left it. And now we've got some pretty good, we're breaking, we have two cars actually break their, uh, air dams hitting the snow. So we just ask that, you can't blow the snow, let the city do it, and shove it by hand, so. But it's getting pretty comical, if I could show you some of the body cam videos, it would be, I think the adults would be pretty embarrassed by their actions.
Can you just go ahead and put that on YouTube or TikTok or something?
Well, we got some good videos.
Alright.
It's a trespass as well, to, to place any kind of object, even if the snow melts, it's still considered a trespass.
That'd have to go well in the courtroom.
Wow.
That's all I have.
Thanks, chief. Public Works Operation Director?
Unfortunately, we had a casualty here yesterday. Um, the orange dump truck, the transmission came, so we're in the process of getting some prices. Um, this is the second transmission, um, had this one go about two, two and a half years ago. Um, but we ended up towing it down off the hill, and getting it shot today, and as far as we know, it's diagnosed with a transmission issue. So we'll have to get a price for about seven thousand dollars to midstate.
That's one percent.
Give it, uh, fixed, and working on it, but ready to go. It's about three weeks old, just to let you get some more. So, yeah, that's, that's supposed to be one of our better trucks. Um, the other one was, you know, wiring, and that's the one that's, the yellow one's the one they're calling for a couple of times. Um, you know, um, just trying to buy, you know, just...
How's that new plow truck working?
Plow truck is a volume of forty-five Ks old.
Sure could've used that, huh?
That's why, I hope we learned a lesson, don't ever buy a new vehicle, buy a used one, 'cause you have it, and you get it for one-third the price.
Yeah. I'm not gonna say it. It's only two years behind where it should've been here, but whatever.
Right.
They didn't raise the price, but what do you do?
They should give us that new year model.
Well, I think it is a 2024, or four or five, or something like that, you know? They have a frame issue, they have frames, the frames, um, is what they were waiting for, you know, whatever the frame came along.
They could tell you anything.
Well, it'll be brand new, but, you know, there's, it's, like I say, it's at the, it's at the builder and at home master, they're, you know, the, under, they didn't fucking up, bought it, put on it, and whatnot. So they got it online, I think about a week and a half ago, so, they're putting it together.
So, the warranty starts once we receive it, correct? Not when we ordered it?
On delivery.
I haven't signed or sent any POG, there's nothing to do with the GAWL, the fourth dealership or the international dealership is asking for. It's all set up here.
Is it too late to just say, eh, we changed our mind, we're gonna buy two different ones?
I don't know. I don't know. But, but yeah, it's a little something, um, yeah. That's all I got, the snow, we're cleaning it, and trying to get rid of it. It was a bad storm, wet, heavy, usually sucks. But, yeah, it was, oh, yeah.
Thank you. You have first responders' presentation, Mike? No? Okay. Then we'll move on to Clerk Skirbick.
You know, since our last meeting, Mike, Lars, and I have been working together, we did send in a CBD grant, the county, our second step in that process. We did an MBC grant this week, finished that up, or last, last Friday, I guess, and that's the second one, so we're applying for two grants with the MBC for stormwater infrastructure. And then, I'm working on closing on the previous grant with the IPRB, and I don't know what they need, so we should be seeing that money come back and see what happens. That's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you. And we will move on to new business. We have Water and Light Advisory Board candidate for Ben Crosby. I think he beat ya. Okay, moved by Councillor Skinsich, supported by Councillor Pulis, to approve Ben Crosby on the Water and Light Advisory Board. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries, five to zero. We also have one for the Planning and Zoning Board, Scott Ankle.
I'm all for it.
Moved by Councillor Skinsich, supported by Councillor Heitzman, to approve Scott Ankle onto the Planning and Zoning Board.
Discussion?
Further discussion.
Since there is no planning, other members, and he says in his application that he's open to others, why don't we just put him on the Water and Light Board? Because there will be no board for him to sit on, and the Planning is...
Still one member of that Planning Commission.
So there'll only be two, so they can't even have meetings. So he says open to others, and if the time comes where he can move over, if we do fill out that, I think, otherwise, he's gonna be sitting without a meeting.
Yeah.
That's just my point of view.
Well, I'm trying to re-group your Planning Commission, 'cause someone's gonna have to make the decisions that are made. So, you know, that's okay if, you know, it's an advisory committee anyhow, we don't need a quorum or anything. We just need somebody who's willing to work and look things through, so.
But normally, when we've only had two people, we don't even have meetings on the Planning and Zoning, I'm just going by my own experience. But, you know, if, if he wants to attend the meeting, and I think we changed the charter, didn't we, Paul, where people can be on two committees?
More than one, yes.
So why don't we put him on both committees then, so then he can at least attend the Planning or Water and Light Board meeting?
I guess I'd like to ask.
I think we should ask.
That's what he said, though, he's open to others.
Right.
Right.
Fair enough.
Just information, so in the past, many, there have been many boards that have not had a quorum. They've gone from being a public meeting to being a working session, and those boards have still passed recommendations on to the council, since ultimately, they are advisory to the council per city charter. The council has the final direction, final vote on them, so, um, there's not the same threshold as you have. If you're having a meeting, you still have to declare it as a public meeting, but if you don't have a quorum, you can still perform work. So if there are just two people on a committee, they can still operate, and they can still do research on behalf of the council and present that to the council.
I know, I've, I've experienced this, and usually, it doesn't work out where there's not enough input from, you know, two people to even bother, so it just...
How about we get him on here, and he can make that decision?
Yeah, and then we can reach out to him. If he wishes to sit in on those, then he can, but at least we have him assigned to the Planning and Zoning.
Is that a motion?
Yep, there is a motion.
So Planning and Zoning, or, or, or Water and Light Board, or, that motion, it can be either or.
We'll have to amend the motion.
Yeah, we gotta make the motion, so he can...
The motion's been made.
The motion's been made. To put him on the.
Planning and zoning.
So can we amend it to put him either.
Only if Jeremy so chooses.
I'll amend my motion to include.
And I'll support my amendment or I'll amend my support of his motion. If he wants to go on that front, but if he wants to meet with two people to do the work of the Planning and Zoning Committee, Commission, more power to him.
Okay.
Motion by councillor Skinsich, supported by councillor Heitzman to approve Scott Ankle on the Planning and Zoning Board and the Water and Light Board. Any further discussion?
And/or.
And/or. I should end, but close enough. No further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. None. Motion carries five to zero. I just ask Mike if you'd reach out to him and let him know. And then on to rank attendant hiring from the personnel committee.
We recommended Jerry Mackey and Joseph Stadler.
Yeah.
Personnel committee looked at the applications and made a recommendation to hire these two individuals to be on the price rank attendant thing and I need the council to approve that.
I'll make the motion to support that. Motion that he made.
I'll second it.
Motion by councillor Heitzman, supported by councillor Skinsich to approve the hiring of the re-rank attendants.
Aye.
Which we have the names. Okay. That applied. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Two applications we got on time and then one came in later.
And they've been hired previously.
Jerry, Jerry Mackey's been with us for about five years under and the other one is newer than that.
Okay.
I'll make sure it passes back.
Perfect. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. None. Motion carries five to zero. Annual liquor license approvals.
Every year we get liquor license applications and those approvals have been vetted. Ty has looked them over with Marion. Everybody's current on all their bills and things like that. So we just need to approve that for the coming year.
Moved by councillor Pulis, supported by councillor Heitzman to approve the annual liquor license approvals. Any further discussion?
Yes. I think you should check, make sure their taxes are paid because I don't believe all of them have paid up their property taxes. They cannot get a license unless their property taxes are paid in full.
Well, then you can kick this down the road to the next meeting because I don't know if they pay their property taxes. I know they all need insurance and they need to make the annual application and pay the fee.
The council could make a conditional approval that they're approved contingent upon verification that the property taxes.
Right.
That's the decision.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you, is that amending your motion, councillor Pulis?
Sure.
Okay. Are you amending your second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Amending contingent on all fees and debts and taxes, property taxes are paid in full. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. None. Motion carries five to zero. And then to set the final December council meeting date. Sounds like we're gonna need one for.
It'll be nice to clear up as much final business for the year as we can. The 27th or the 30th are available dates.
Friday night or Monday night?
One's a Friday, one's a Monday. We could do it at 5:00 too, if that's helpful, if everybody wants to get done sooner. And you only need three here, but I'd like to make sure that we close the year out as accurately as we can and have a fresh start for 2025.
Either of those dates are potentially good for me, the 27th or the 30th.
And I don't think I have anything planned, so.
As he looks to the left, that's pretty big.
You saw that?
I can't do either one. We'll be doing training, so I'll be out.
So question to Brian on that canvassing of the votes, do you need a simple majority just to do that? So we need three people here.
It needs to be just a simple.
By three, simple majority. Okay. I can be here Friday or the Monday one. It doesn't matter.
You guys pick.
Do Monday.
Monday?
Friday, I know I won't be.
Let's do Monday.
Monday is questionable.
All right.
I might have more odds of being here Monday than for sure.
Okay, as long as we get three.
Yeah, we'll pick Monday then, the 30th.
5:00 is fine, wouldn't he?
5?
Yeah.
5:00.
5:00, Monday the 30th.
Okay.
Eesh, long weekend. I mean, it's tough.
The final item that we need to take care of at this evening's meeting is to have a resolution approving your levy and another one approving your final budget. I have to redo them now from 7% to 6%, but that's no problem. We need to approve Resolution 2024-26 and 2024-27. And I will make the necessary changes to have that at 6%.
Can maybe one motion, I make a motion to approve, what is it, 2024-26 and 27?
We should split it.
Split it into two. Do 26 first.
Do I have to read that, Brian?
Budget.
Do I have to read the resolution? Because it wasn't part, okay, perfect.
My motion is to approve the 2024-26 resolution, setting the levy at 6%.
Motion by councillor Heitzman to approve the 2024-26 resolution, setting the levy at 6%. Do I have a second?
No second.
Second by councillor Poten. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries.
I said aye.
Aye. Four to one.
The 2024-27 is the budget.
So I'll make a motion to approve the 2024-27, which is the budget for the fiscal year 2025.
Correct.
Motion by councillor Heitzman to approve the 2024-27 resolution for the budget.
I'll second.
For 2025, seconded by councillor Skinsich. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. And is there any miscellaneous?
Looks at, we need to do that?
Yes. Did we want to have that discussion on the rock bridge?
Yeah, is there any updates?
From the working session.
Was there an update?
No, there, if you want us to go look at that building, you need to direct us to do that. And I think that should be saying myself and the council or two.
Are we?
Or are you looking?
Are, are.
You don't need to look at all of you.
Yeah, do we need more discussion on even what we're gonna do up there, you know? We don't know if we're even gonna offer on the land or offer on the building.
Is this something that's gonna be, are they looking at doing something sooner?
No, my understanding was that we would further, at our last meeting, we said that we would have further discussion on whether or not we'd be interested in looking at the bus garage.
Okay.
My two cents on this is I would kind of plop that on the table of an incoming city council. They're gonna have to make any movement on that, any offers on that. That's all then.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
But on the record, I'm in favor for moving forward with that property, that garage.
So am I specifically the garage for city use?
Correct.
But the way they worded their proposal was all or nothing.
Or, yeah.
Yeah. So it needs a lot more discussion.
Pretty wide open. We'll let the next council make.
We don't have time to deal with it anyway.
Right, no.
They can barter on it.
Yep. And it'll be a new school board also.
Move to adjourn?
Motion by, any, any other miscellaneous? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Motion by councillor Heitzman to adjourn our city council meeting. Do I have a second? Supported by councillor Pulis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay?
Nay.
Okay, we can stay.
Motion to pass is four to one. Meeting adjourned at 7:42 PM.